Good evening, everyone. I'll call the October 22nd, 2024 council meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mrs. Walden, here. Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum present and can continue with the meeting. Please stand and join me in the prayer and prayer of allegiance. Let us bow our heads. Do y'all want to come on in?
There's some time to be prayed for.
Yes. Father God, we gather here today under your care and protection. Thank you for your love and kindness that never fails us. We thank you for those of us that you would guide our thoughts and actions to bring you glory tonight in this meeting. We ask now, Father, that you would bless all families who are bereaved, but especially for the mayor's family. Strengthen us and fill us with your peace. Fill us with your Holy Spirit to do your good work here on earth. Bless everyone, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. I would like to recognize the students from Cliff Wilkinson's class that are here today. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. We will now move to public comments and recognize anyone who has signed up. No one signed up. Okay, at this time, I need to request that we amend the agenda to add one item. The city was contacted earlier this week requesting the cancellation of a subordinate deed, which was granted to the city in 2009 as part of the CHIP grant program. There is a sale pending on the property, and the closing attorney asked if approval of the cancellation of the deed could be completed expeditiously. Therefore, I am requesting that the agenda be amended to add Resolution R-2410-47 to authorize the cancellation of this deed. Do I hear a motion to amend the agenda?
Make a motion that we amend the agenda.
Second.
Okay, a motion in second has been made. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries and the agenda is amended. You all have received a copy of the October 8th, 2024 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to be made? Here and now, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in second. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
The motion carries and the minutes are adopted. As technology has become a major player in the prevention and solving of crime, you as city aldermen have seen the need for an importance of providing resources to the city's police department, which allows them the opportunity to utilize the technology in their work. Additionally, many of the police department's staff members have completed training and received certification in the use of various technology in the provision of public safety for our community. Tonight, we have us with us, have with us this evening, Chief Dre Swiker, Major Link Boyer, Lieutenant Philip Vinson, Sergeant Brandon Crawford, and Sergeant Thomas Smith, to give us an update on how technology is being used in our police department. Gentlemen?
You guys gave us the opportunity, starting July, with this new budget for forensic lab, and just rolled over into a lot more equipment that we're using to fight crime. We've got drones in. We have currently five drones. And I have with me tonight our three pilots. Lieutenant Philip Vinson, he oversees our forensic lab. Him, Sergeant Brandon Crawford, and Sergeant Thomas Smith run our drone program. So I'm gonna let them come up here and give you the details as a sideshow and ask questions if you see for them.
I'm Lieutenant Philip Vinson, I'm with Milletville Police. Chief Swiker mentioned we've come to be able to utilize technology a lot more, especially this fiscal year with the new incentive to lab, along with that training that I've received with the Secret Service and all the equipment we have from them. Technology is one of those things that it's just becoming an evolving, you know, an evolving event. There's, there's nothing you can't do now with our technology, and everybody knows that. From the phone in your pocket to the computer, we all sit around, I mean, every little phone now is a computer that everybody has. With that, you know, crime evolves with it. You have cryptocurrency crimes, you have dark web phishing stuff, exploitation crimes. And for us, we are kind of on the forefront now. We've been lucky enough with the assistance of city council and the chief for recognizing that Milletville is in that unique circumstance now, where we are one of the top agencies in the state of Georgia with our equipment, our technology, and our ability to turn around these crimes and solve these crimes in a rapid manner. Not just from the fact of cyber crimes, but just our, in general, just normal crime that we have around here. Our shootings, our robberies, our burglaries. Anytime those events happen, technology that we have, the lab that we have now, has just been instrumental in allowing us to move forward and, you know, get details back rapidly. With technology that's being utilized by criminals nowadays, you've got anything from encrypted messaging, social media, which everybody knows now, Facebook just swapped over. That was one of the big hurdles we ran into. They really pushed us back into the last scenario. By that, I mean, you used to have messaging where you were on Facebook or whatever you were on. We had messaging, we could get it, we had a way to get it. Now you have encryption coming out, where you have in-in encryption. So our avenues now have changed to focusing on cellular devices. Because of your device, we can pretty much get an open book into your, your, your life and what you've been doing. So that's really pushed us forward. Some of the forensic tools we have gives us the ability to extract cellular devices, computers, vehicle, and obtainment systems, all your IOT. Everyone knows what that is, et cetera, things. That's anything from smart thermostats, smart beds. People hardly think about those things. And we do it from a smart bed where it's a heartbeat sensor. So if you say you were not in an area two days ago and we pull your bed out and realize you have a smart bed, we check and say, oh, there's a heartbeat. So where were you again? It's kind of one of those things we don't think about. And we have the ability in our lab to be able to pull that data out. And it's something that we really have come to be recognized in the central Georgia area specifically, with utilization of multiple agencies around the area that come to us strictly for lab purposes, that we have the ability to turn things around so much faster than the state and other labs in the area, that we are just kind of that, that go-to. With that, obviously, we always have the need to, to further evolve, you know, cyber technology and everything else, because it's, it's an ever-growing field. It's an emerging field. The caseload is growing. Keeping up with that is a struggle. It's a battle. You know, we can buy stuff today and tomorrow it may be obsolete. You know, we could do all these different things, try and keep up. But it's just, it's that field where the support of the city council, the citizens, the police department, everybody around is just a crucial part for us. And the evolution is going to continue. There's, there's no stopping it. I, I can use the word future-proofing, but it's not true, because you can't really future-proof anything. It's, it's one of those things where we, we can try and keep up, and we would hope that we're going to continue receiving any of that funding and support that we need to push through that. But other than that, I, I think the biggest emphasis we've got is that, you know, we're, we're just that national recognition, that, that state recognition now, that we are one of the top here. And that just goes show a lot of, you know, what we've done, what police departments have done, what city councils allowed us to do. Any questions on anything specific that y'all are curious about? I know it's a whole lot of information.
We're very proud of the work the child did.
Yeah, yeah, we thank them. Like I said, it's, it's a group effort, it's team effort, and it always will be.
So this afternoon, we were talking in 1986. When I walked into the police department, probably six months after it was built, we had seven type riders in the olden time building. Now what we have, Philip?
Thirty-four, thirty-five desktop towers, seven or eight servers, thirty-five mobile computers, fifty body cams. You know, it's technology for days.
So this is our IT guy, too?
Yeah, a lot of maintenance on that side, too. I don't go into a lot of the IT stuff, because I was focused on forensics. But yeah, the IT side of that, there is a lot of, a lot of that, too.
He's also the one that fixed the back door so y'all can get back in.
Okay, well, we are.
Keep your check on it, we don't want it to go down.
I've actually got to come in and do some more work on it, but we're going to keep it up.
I was going to tell you, we, we replaced appliances, and I have a smart oven.
I know.
And I hadn't figured that thing out yet.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, like I said, it's technology.
I ain't even been able to figure out how to set the time on it.
Yeah, no, that's technology for you. It's one of those things that's continually growing.
It's smart for me.
Everything's going to become smart one day. When your kids are smarter tech, it's one or the other, but.
How many people's got smart beds?
More than you think. I actually got one. As long as it heats and cools on each side, and it's, it tracks heartbeats and everything else, deep sleep. So it's, it's just a common thing now. I mean, you, you can't go to a store now and not buy an appliance that doesn't have some kind of smart feature, it seems like. It's just, it's there.
I didn't even know they had them. I used the television, but I.
Yeah. Anything you want now. Your coffee maker can do it. You can, you can set your whole house up to run, you know, by itself. So get a Google Nest and buy a bunch of smart stuff and tell everything to start certain things at certain times.
Wow. I think that's all right.
It's a little bit scary.
Have they got a smart cleaner?
They did, yeah, vacuum a mop. You can get a vacuum.
I know I've got a robot, but have they got something that'll just come in and do the dishes and everything?
No, I don't think they got that yet. It's probably coming.
Well, I got a dishwasher, but I have to load it.
Yeah, it's coming, I'm sure. Just give it some time. All right, well, if y'all have anything else for me, I'm going to let the drone guys come up here and talk about the drone stuff a little bit, so.
Okay.
Kind of feedback on what Chief said a while ago. When Chief Blue hired me in 2004, I remember having to do accident reports on that, on some of them. And having to send them up to the, and the guys in the front room in the dispatch had to take and transcribe them or do whatever they did up yonder. But type the warrants by hand on all that stuff. Like Chief said, I'm Thomas Smith. I'm the traffic guy here for the police department. I work all the fatality, serious injury crashes that we've had too many of and everything. I'm also, I'll do the drone things with Sergeant Crawford here. We brought one of them. This is the newest one. Before I get, just so y'all can look at it when we kind of start talking, you'll have something to look at.
Oh, I thought you were going to fly it there for a minute.
Hey, we were. We were, but we decided. Well, I thought Mr. Hank was going to have his table up here, and he was going to have papers, and so we just kind of scratched all that.
Oh, good. He's not up there?
So when we start talking about things, this is our newest one. This is what you'll have to look at. Let's see if I can get this to work. All right, just kind of a snapshot of what we do. All right, we operate under the FAA Part 107. That's the commercial drone operator. All right, all three of us are licensed through the FAA. Two of us also hold a private pilot's license through the FAA. So flight experience here, it's not, we're just not somebody who went and took a, took a little presentation on the internet and, and got certified. We, we've been through. You'll hear a lot about SUAS on the internet, on the news, oh, the SUS system. All that means is drone, Small Unmanned Aircraft System. All right, so when you see that, it's, it's nothing big. The FAA is, is government, and they have to put their own spin on things. Currently, we've got this. This is our DJI Matrice 30T. This one's got a thermal camera on front of it, and, and I'm going to show you some stuff here in a minute about what that looks like. Right now, this is the only thermal camera we have in service. We've got an Alltel Evo 2 Enterprise. We call it Wally, it's the little orange one, if you've seen it around. That one also has the capability to have a thermal camera on it. Lieutenant Vinson just got three others that we're testing out for other uses and everything. Some to go kind of up close to houses where we wouldn't normally take, take these things. As of yesterday, when we went and pulled the stuff, there's been approximately thirty this year, thirty requests from deployments, for deployments. That's between us, other agencies, special services, just requests in general. We don't log all of our, we have an in-house training log that we keep. We log all of our training flights there. Any training of visual observers, because the FAA likes for us to have visual observers or someone that can take and just watch for us while we're flying. If we're flying at night, we like to have one, so they can watch the drone while we're looking at what we're looking at while we're flying. Some of the places that have, that have asked for us, the county before they got theirs. Hancock County has used us quite a good bit. We love working for Sheriff Primes. Washington County, I've recently been to Newton County, helped them with some of their PR stuff. We've flown for the Secret Service, the Drug Task Force, the, the Marshals Fugitive Task Force. We've done some drills and things with EMA to help them out and just to give them an overall aerial picture without having to call in a helicopter to do some of their, their things. Some of the things, this is not an all-inclusive list, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm reading off the thing back here. Y'all got it, okay. Search and rescue, that's, that's the biggest thing we use these for. Most of our, our call-outs are, are search and rescue oriented. Some of the unfortunate drownings at the Greenway, up at the dam, we come out for those. We've gotten on top of the dam and flown from the top of the dam. These help DNR go to some of those places over on the actual dam side where it's very, very hard for them to go, where they can't get a boat, where it would take, you know, minutes to maybe a couple of hours for them to get a person over there. We can just get up, zip, go over there, and we can look at whatever they need us to look at. Obviously, our serious injury and fatal crashes, I'm going to show you a couple of things, nothing gory. I'm going to show you a couple of crashes and how we use this, this type of tech, or I use this type of technology. Major crime scenes, we help map evidence for them. The Columbia Pub, I don't know if that case is in still, but that crime scene was so large that, that the drone was, was very, very helpful in helping them map out where everything was, because that scene was just huge, almost that whole shopping center. So that helps. Traffic monitoring, you know, Chief will call and say, hey, why, why is traffic backed up on Columbia Street? If I'm close, I can take, instead of me having to go out there and fight through traffic, I can throw the drone up. We can look. It's either just regular old Friday afternoon traffic.
Christ, Friday.
In Millisville. Okay, we'll include payday. You know, if it's just regular old, if it's just regular old Millisville traffic, or if there indeed is something going on, okay, well, there is a wreck. I'll bring it back down, we can, we can get up there. If there's somebody close, we can do that. Suspect location and apprehension, that's another good portion of our, our call-outs. And I'll show you some stuff here where, where we've taken and tracked and suspects and assisted other agencies in, in catching those people. Public relations, we don't try to hide anything that we do with this, with these drones. It's where we're, within the law, we are as transparent as we can be. We take them to schools, we take them to public gatherings, we take them, wherever people call and ask us to take them, we take them and we talk about them. We show them, we walk, we show them how it takes off. We, we fly it for them. We, we try not to hide anything about them, because that's one thing that the FAA likes. They like for us to be involved in the community and not trying to be super secret squirrel about anything. There, there's nothing secret about it, you know? We, we won't try to hide. So we, we try to get it out as often as we can, just so the public knows that we have it and, and what we do with them. Your large events, I'm going to show you a couple of pictures from Saturday. I've got some pictures from Saturday on here from D groups. Like I said, this is not an all-inclusive list. Fire Department, we, we have helped the fire department where they've been fighting a house fire, and they're, they're spraying water over here. Well, we'll throw the drone up. Hey, y'all, you're in the wrong spot. We put the thermal on, and it'll show us those hot spots. Y'all need to be over here. Oh, okay. And then they'll, they'll come over there, and it helps them get the fire and everything out a lot quicker. All right, let's get into it. This was a crash up on Columbia Street. This has been months ago. How, how the drone would help me in this situation right here? It can help me see a path of travel that may not be evident standing on the ground. It can help me find the point of impact of the crash. Where we think the point of impact of the crash may have been way over here on the left, I can see, I can throw the drone up, see on the picture here. Well, no, the point of impact was actually more in these lanes over here. So I can see a lot of that. It can, it could give me, and I'll show you with a truck, it can give me a direction of travel. If I can't figure out how something is, I can throw this up, look at it, and be like, okay, so he came this way, not this way. Because statements from some people, if you've ever been in a car crash, bless your heart, and I'm sorry, sometimes you just ain't right. You know, you have a mixed view of what may have happened. I was going south. Well, no, he was going north. So this helps me there. Now, in this particular crash, we were testing out some 3D modeling. Drones now have the ability to 3D model an area. Contractors use it, roofers use it. So we, we, we tested it out, and this is kind, this is one of those models. How the model benefits me, you can see it all right here. Instead of me going out and spray painting the roadway and confusing DOT, I can take and, I can do a 3D model, or I can take an overhead picture, and I can put all of my measurements on here. They're, they're accurate down to the centimeter. So when it gets, when it gets presented to the DA's officer in court, well, what's the scale of it? How accurate is it? We can pull the data from the drone and say, well, all this was accurate within one centimeter. This right here, this was a nighttime crash. There's one, two, there's three cars in this picture. To help me draw to scale, I'm going to show it to you. All right, this is what it looked like. So I can get that overhead shot, and this, this is the diagram that comes out of that. It's to scale, it shows everything where it was during the crash. I didn't know that that one, I knew that that car, that white car down at the bottom, very, at the very bottom, I knew that that car had rolled over. I just didn't know how many times. But, but the aerial shot showed me how many times that that car had rolled over. So that gave me more of an indication of speed about how that car was going. So using this in, in a, in a crash sense, it, it helps tremendously. This lady happened to be DUI. It shows me the roadway. It, it doesn't, it doesn't tell me how many times. I, I take this overall, this overhead picture, and I look at the roadway, and I can tell from a crash investigation standpoint what a rollover looks like, and I'll look for that evidence on this picture. And so I'm able to tell how many times that car rolled over. All right, everybody remember this one? So when, when I get there, of course, this was af, after that car had been moved, that was up under that truck. I was, the driver said that he had rolled back and hit the car. Well, I was kind of confused at how he ended up like that and how the car ended up where the car had ended up. So throw this up to get an overhead picture. This truck had started rolling well ahead of that fire truck up there. So where he said he just rolled a little bit, no, 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 no. He rolled about halfway down that hill. Because you can see some of the fluid trail right there in the roadway behind the fire truck. So that led me, well, there's another, there's a path to this. So I went up there, and he started way up there, just past the driveway, a little, little further. All right, get into, get into this. Mr. Hank, you can go help me drive a little bit. Fast forward just a little bit. All right, so this right here, just a little background. This subject had run for something. We were, we were called to come out and, and help see if we can locate him. We had checked the area. Didn't really see anything. Summertime, it's very hard for us to see through trees, so we usually check around houses as best we can kind of thing. One of the state patrol canines was out just running his dog. So you may see some officers standing to the side. They're, they're staying out of the way of that dog. They're not just standing twiddling on their thumbs. We have to get out of the way of the dog. And what will show you is where the dog picks up that track and, and the dog goes to the person. But we like to sit over top of things like this in case some, while everybody's there, should someone or something else come out of the woods, we have an overview of that, and we can let people know, hey, there's something else behind you. So it's more of an officer's safety standpoint when we do that. All right, Mr. Hank, fast forward.
I see the dog.
A good bit. Yeah, the dog will be kind of on the bottom right down here. If you'll see, going toward that blue car. See, everybody just kind of over there. Yeah, go a little, go a little more now. A little bit more. A little more. I say a little more. Few more clicks. All right. Go a little more. There'll be a white house. All right, that white trailer right there? I'm going to let it play for, I know y'all are short on time and everything, I'm sorry. But that white trailer right there, watch, watch the dog. And usually, once we see that they have him in custody, we'll, we may follow him to a car, just make sure that the person doesn't give you any trouble. But most of the time, we'll, we'll fly off and come home. So right now, they, they have him, they're just coaxing him out from, he was up under that thing.
Go, dog.
And there, there he is.
Oh, there he is.
There he is in the red shirt. Okay.
Amazing.
Fall, uh, fall line palm burglary, one of these last ones that we had. Well, it was back during the wintertime, I think. We checked over near the area, because we thought they had run that area. We got word that they have gone over to Graham Homes. So we're in Graham Homes. I'm getting ready to, to put it up just for, again, for Overwatch. Patrol shakes this guy out of the bushes. They spook him out of the bu, is that how that went down? Yeah, and so, so this one, uh, this one bolted, and I just happened to be up, and this is him running. Now, this is the FLIR, this is the thermal camera. This is at night. This is in a mode we call black hot. Anything that you see is, that's black is, is hot. So of course, him being the black silhouette, his body temperature and everything. So you see him, he's running up beside the house, he kind of gets hard to see. But he's, he's kind of behind that tree right there. We got him. This is where the visual observer helps, is because while I'm flying, I'm focused on him and making sure I don't hit anything. The visual observer is watching that screen, telling me, hey, okay, stop, pan up, pan down. And he's, he's giving the calls to patrol, telling them where he's at, how to get to him.
Does a visual, visual observer have to be licensed also?
No, we can self, kind of self-certify. We have a course that's like a two-hour course that we put them through. So he's just running all, all through there, and you can see him coming back down. If you want to fast forward just a little bit, let me see. That should we go? He should be down there at the bottom. This, this right here is essentially where they take him into custody. As you'll see, you see the cars coming around. We're, we're leading them where to go. And the, the next video is an even better example. Yeah, they've already got him, they're checking the outbuildings and, and everything here. Not, not, nothing spectacular on the apprehension point, but this gives you an idea of what we see when we're flying at night, when we do track somebody at night. This is what it looks like. This is what we see. In their frame of mind, if they're, if they've got an adrenaline dump, they don't hear. All right, this one right here, this is the second suspect. I'll shoot. That building right there on the left, that's the office to North Side Baptist, which is where I was sitting, flying from here. I was actually getting ready to land. We just found that guy. I was turning around to come home to land, and when I turned around, we hit plane's track. we hit play, Mr. Hank. When I turned around, started coming back, he popped up. So we're gonna follow him. We're gonna turn right onto MLK. Now, same thing, same time. Me and the visual observer, we're calling out where we are. We're, we're letting them know which way he's going. Well, everybody's tied up over here on this last guy, so it, it takes a minute for them to get over there. But most, most of the time, they, they don't know we're there. He never knew I was there. And I follow him all over, MLK behind Weeks. We get over there to Wilkinson Street. And he, he never knew, he never knew I was there. Alright, he's on Wilkinson now. So he's crossing over. You see where he cross, or Wayne, he crossed over. He's going down there toward the bottom. Now, here's the, here's the drawback with the, with the FLIR. Everybody says, you've got a FLIR, you can see through walls. It doesn't work like that. So you see where it's still kinda heavy? We can't see through heavy, heavy brush. So what we do in these instances, we know he's in there, so we'll just kinda sit still. And he'll pop right back out. And then we'll pick him up again and follow him. So he runs through this house. That house on the top left up there, he's gonna go camp out around it. Fast forward just a little bit. I should be close to over top of that house. So he's in that corner, you see him in the corner of that house? I think that was a county unit up there at the top, and because they scan and, I, I'm not really sure why they, they stopped up there. Go a little bit further, Mr. Hank, I'm sorry. Not that far. Alright, right, that's good. Now here in just a minute, you'll see some, you'll see some other officers come down. There's one of us standing right there. He's by himself. I can't, I know that guy's in that corner of this house. He's by himself. I don't know where this fella is. So, we don't want him going up there by himself, if we can help it. But the guy was kinda smart, because he saw the flashlight of our guy, and he starts kinda trying to play a ring around the house a little bit. But y'all, y'all watch that top, top right corner of that house. You got our other two guys coming down?
Boops.
Just spend a long day that morning. We got you. So both of the, both of those guys, in relation to that, that burglary that night, got caught. So that was, that was all good. That's happened recently with this one with Sergeant Crawford and some of the entering auto suspects. He was up, he was up one night, and he saw him in the parking lot of the apartment complex, and, and it was on. Seven.
Seven? Entering autos?
Seven suspects.
Seven, oh wow. Yeah, but those are ones who've been sent already?
Oh yeah.
So if you watch, if you watch Top Gun, and they can, they can acquire several different targets, they can, they can shoot one down and then go immediately to another one. If we're in the right environment, that, that's the benefit of this, like, like the environment that he was in. He can, he can flag one, and he has the ability to, to drop pins where they are with this one. So he, we've got a map, and he can just pin them where, where they were last known. So he can see one, call it out, and then he sees another one, he can, he can track that one. Walking him to the car. But this, this is the, this is the FLIR. This is the bread and butter of these things.
Maybe.
A very expensive one.
We were talking earlier, if you, if you can, if you can play an Xbox, you, you could probably figure one of these out. Yes. I, I'll touch on that in just a second. Get done with this. The event Overwatch, large things, Christmas parades, Deep Roots. This is a picture from Deep Roots the other night. Any large events that we have, any, we know that there's gonna be a large crowd somewhere. A lot of times, we'll, we'll probably be up, just, just watching. This was a quick overhead of Deep Roots. That's Hancock and Wayne right there. This was later in the afternoon, I think. But just to give you an idea of, of some of your crowd size and, and how everything was laid out. Just wanted to snap real quick. I think it's Hancock's room.
How are your other times?
Uh, about 250 maybe. We'll get up high. A lot of times, we'll get up high, and then we'll just zoom in a couple of times. That way, we're not down super low, in case something happens. Let me know when you're ready, Mr. Hank. You ready for me to go on? I see, I, I didn't know if you was looking at something. I didn't wanna click the screen.
I'm just amazed at what all you can see from there. She was just pointing out the kids' house.
We did a kind of a roundabout. So we'll, we'll get right here, we'll start, and we'll just kinda rotate. We go all the way around downtown. The FAA doesn't like for us to fly directly over people. However, it says that we can fly temporarily over people if we're transiting. So that's why you'll see us over buildings a lot of times, and so we're not violating, uh, that law. There's the, if you wanna see the top of the Masonic Lodge, there it is. Church right there on the top.
Roof top, land, going to top City Hall. I didn't even realize it.
Two years ago, we were sitting up there doing this during Deep Roots. It's not very comfortable. We didn't wanna go directly over top of the kids.
They were having a fun.
What frame rate and resolution are y'all usually shooting at?
It depends. Uh, sometimes it'll auto to, it, it likes to be around ISO around 800. But it'll, it'll go between 800, 1200. Uh, they have stops usually about 2.8.
4K?
Yeah. A lot, a lot of them, if we're, if we're doing a lot, like, it'll be around 1080p kinda thing. Nothing spectacular, but...
If the Deep Roots Committee wanted some of this for marketing purposes.
Y'all had your own pilot out there. We talked to him.
Yeah, but these are some great shots.
We don't know what his stuff looked like. We, we talked to him for a minute. He didn't know we were, we were flying from the top of the parking deck. He didn't know we were up there. And he was sitting below the parking deck, and all of a sudden, we see his little thing go zzzup. So we went and had a talk with him, find out who, who he was and everything. Like, okay buddy, yeah, you're, you're good. You're good. Yes, the video, the videos, the video quality, if we get it set right, and, and as long as there's not a whole lot of wind, like Lieutenant Vincent said, it just goes, it's very, very seamless, and everything.
That's great.
That's at night. At night, we kinda have to play with the, with the photo settings a little bit, to see whatever it's liking at that time. One setting is, is not a catch-all. I, I was discharging the batteries in this particular drone. It's not this one. The other night, when the comet was out, and I just, well, let me see, 'cause I can't see it. Let me see if I can catch it. And I wish I'd put it on there, but I was able to catch that comet with the camera. I mean, it, it took some tinkering, uh, but I was able to catch it. Uh, this one, it looks empty. Most of your people, they're either in the stage area, or they're on the other end watching the Georgia game. There's your stage. That was from over top of City Hall. That was right, right after the game, I think. Well, no, that was a little while after. Alright. This right here, this is, when we buy these drones, this is what all we get. So someone looks at, you know, a hefty price tag, and they're like, man, that's a lot for that. Well, with the technology, some of which you've seen today, it, they're, they're pricey. The biggest expense on these things is that thermal camera. That thermal camera is a, is almost worth as much as the drone.
How much, how much is one of those now? I know they wasn't that expensive.
I'm gonna let him either answer that or not.
How many of these have we got?
We only have one of this one. We've only had one of this one. We, the other ones are smaller, or, or, you know.
That's the ones I have seen is the ones that are smaller. I hadn't seen one this big.
Yeah, and they only get bigger.
And how much is that one? Come on, Dre, tell me how much it is. Cause we need, yeah, but we need them. I mean, they're worth their money. We do need them. If we have some money, I'd like to see you have them.
What we get, what we get, we get this, the company we buy from, he makes these. So we get, we get a TV screen. There's a TV screen in here. We've got a 10-hour battery pack that will run everything. So we're, it's, we like to run off external power if we can, just to save on everything, and it helps the batteries charge. Uh, we have a battery case that'll charge all four sets of batteries within, you know, depending on how dead we run them, 30 minutes maybe. But it's got, it's got a TV screen in there. Uh, it's got the 10-hour battery box. This one come with the All-Knowing, All-Wise Wizard of Oz remote. And four sets of batteries. So this one has about two and a half, three hours worth of flight time. If we wanted to stay up, we could land this one, hot swap the batteries. We don't have to cut this one off. We don't have to cut it off. We don't have to cut it back on. We can hot swap the batteries, send it right back up. And we can, we can stay in an area for, for about two and a half, three hours, depending on wind, weather, how hot it is, humidity, things like that. But they, they, they get on it, like Chief said, they, they hefty. But we think that they are well worth it.
Oh yeah, I do too.
You know, and we just didn't wanna come up here and talk and say, hey, this is what it is. We wanted to physically show you. This is what it is. This is what it buys. This is what it does.
Can you set up something, Dre, for us to, any of us that want to come down and actually see it work? Alright, I get with you, 'cause I'd like to come down there and watch it work.
What was your question back there about the case, about the plane?
Yes, we do fly it from here. This one, if we turn it on, it, it looks like the HUD of a fighter jet. So we've usually got somebody watching it, and then we've got somebody flying from the screen. And we can fly from the remote separate if we need to. The reason we like this screen and everything, so if Chief and Major Boyer come out there, they're not looking directly over our shoulder onto this. We can step off here to the side. They can watch the screen, see what they wanna see, and we're over here flying, doing our thing. And if they see something, they point it out, and we can, we can deal with it then. But that, that's, that's one of the big benefits of that as well.
How quickly can you pull?
This one? Yeah, less than a minute. Uh, Wally, I call it Wally, 'cause if you put the light on it, it looks like Wally. I'm sorry. I can, I can have it out, have it out and up in 30 seconds. No, the total, the total combined power there is about that. We, we get about, depending on the conditions, the orange one, uh, the little one that I fly, it, it's running about 25 minutes of battery. This one, on, on a good, cool night, you probably get right at 30 minutes. Other money. We'll talk other money.
Is there a market for what you have that's outdated, and then you, I mean, we can turn around, we can sell to another department or whatever, and...
That I don't know.
We ain't gotten to that point yet?
We haven't gotten to that, but so far as...
I was just wondering if, you know, if there was anybody that wanted to get started up, and they would take a use of it. Anything to help Ms. Walden understand that maybe we got some money back out of it.
Well, I know that the cameras in the neighborhoods that I wanted to spread, I've already checked with Dre, and they have more than paid for theirselves.
But this, this technology, kinda like Lieutenant Vincent said with the forensics and the phones and stuff, it's constantly moving. You, you've got to be there with it. And this stuff, it's, it's, it's moving ra- more rapidly than anything else. They've got one, we were gonna pitch to you, but we're not. It's called the, was it the Dragon Fish? The Dragon Fish. It, it looks like an airplane, but once it gets up, it has, it has a loiter speed of about 50 miles an hour. It can sit there. It can fly from here to Gray, so we could watch the target from here to Gray. But that would be in violation of some rules. And it, and it could stay up for, for several hours. But the price tag on that's about 160 something thousand. So we're not pitching that. We're gonna forget.
The city manager starts sorting in.
See, you've already shown me.
So, so this is so much more cheaper.
You could get four of the, four, five of those.
Y'all got anything else?
You know, in- interestingly enough, we, we actually looked at a GBI grant a number of years back, when, when GBI was offering some of the ARPA money out. And we could not buy drones with it, because the drones were not made in the United States.
But you said there's an individual that makes these?
The cases, not drones, the cases. This is a DJI drone.
But just like anything, I, I probably get about $7 a day from vendors. Everything is going, yeah, computers, radars, drones. Everybody jumping on the board.
This, this has got China stuff in it.
It's Grant gone?
But this has got China stuff in it, and a lot of people want to move away from this. Oh, it's Chi- China spying on everything that you do. Well, we're not doing anything that's illegal. We're not doing anything that's violating anyone's privacy or anything.
You're trying to catch the people that are doing the illegal.
We, we're not spying. We're not taking people's data and selling it to China. So we're not doing anything that, if they got the logs on it, it's not gonna show anything.
I think the time that you save with Rex, you know, I mean, you ain't got a wheel out there, and you're trying to measure, and, and
And it's not...
Holding traffic up and doing all that thing, but you can come right in and, and...
And it's not every crash that I use them on. It's, it's ones that are, are seriously gonna be prosecutable, that I just need every little bit that I can get on them, or if it's one that's just, well, how in the world? I need, I need something else that, that the car and the roadway is not giving me. I'll throw it up, and usually, it'll tell us. I can find what I'm looking for with it.
Just like you with the, you know, with the, how many times it had flipped and leaving debris and, you know. Pretty good.
Dre. Mr. Swacker, um, we can use the money that, like, at these school zones and things, that money could be used toward, cause it has to go to the police department. Can it be used? Okay, so it can be.
Now, to wrap up on our, on our part of it, one, I wanna say thank you to Chief, 'cause he's been here since 1986. And a lot of times, you get some old chiefs, they don't wanna adapt to new.
He's trying to stay young.
One, when we go in his office with stuff, sometimes he looks at us like we're absolutely crazy. But one, thank you to him for letting us...
He knows, that's how I'm gonna look at him.
I'm getting to that, I'm getting to that. For one, from him getting a step rolling from the police department, and then when it does come up here to City Hall, Mr. Hank and the rest of y'all up here, we appreciate y'all giving us the funding and helping us to be able to get these stuff. Real quick, just, to me, it's an officer safety issue for us, and having these things makes us so much safer for our officers. He, they didn't tell y'all that first, where y'all saw the guy getting trailed with the dog. That was a drive-by shooting suspect. They just got sentenced, I think, 30 years. The drone's able to help us with that. That pawn shop burglary, those individuals had shot, they had used a gun to shoot the windows out of the pawn shop. Prior to that. So with us being able to have the drone, Overwatch, see what the person's doing before we send the officers in there, some of the other drones that we have, if we have a barricaded subject, it's a small drone, we can send it in and actually look what the person's doing, instead of sending the officers in and getting into a situation. So, uh, one, I appreciate Chief on that, and I appreciate y'all for giving us support, support that we need to do that. And our drone unit gets used frequently. This weekend, it's gonna be crazy. We got homecoming here in Millisville, um, that we'll, us and the county will probably be using it for. Also, Hancock County has requested us to assist them with their homecoming, 'cause I think the home- the homecoming festivities are gonna be Baldwin and Hancock, at Hancock. Um, so again, just to wrap that up, thank y'all for supporting us on that. Thank the Chief for letting us get this equipment and y'all making it possible.
For childhood.
Thank you all so much.
Good job.
Are there any additional questions from the audience, um, about the presentation or to the presenters? Okay, I'd like to thank you all too for this great information, for the excellent work that you all and your personnel do to keep our community safe. And we also want to say on behalf of council, that we never, ever, ever want to, want to hear Chief Swiker come up here and say, when we do budget time, that we're behind any other police department in this area. So we are going to have to stay on our toes and, and you all keep us informed as to what you need. And we're gonna do our best to make sure that Millisville is, is our leaders and, and on top of our game in everything that we do. And we thank you so much for everything. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the city manager's report and I'll recognize Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Ms. Shinholster. Mine is not near as exciting, uh, as the drones, but I'll cover mine pretty quickly. Um, I just wanted to make sure you all understood that on resolution twenty-four, ten dash forty-five, the resolution dealing with replacing the fencing around three of our cemeteries. Um, option two on that contract is what we will be, um, doing. So I wanted you to make sure that you realize that, uh, all of the fencing on the west side of Westview Cemetery will be replaced as opposed to just the damaged fencing. Um, location one is Bone Cemetery. All of the fencing around Bone Cemetery will be replaced.
Thank you, thank you. Let me say thank you.
Location two, Memory Hill Cemetery, uh, that's gonna be removed and replaced, damaged fencing on the rear and the west side. Adjacent to South Clark Street, actually to Flag Chapel Lane. And, um, and then the Restview Cemetery will be removing and replacing all the fencing on the, the west side of that, of that.
Basically, they're gonna fix anything that needs to be fixed.
That's correct, that's correct. So, um, so on page two of that contract, option two is what you'll be approving if you approve, that contract this evening. Um, we have our first resolution tonight dealing with alcohol renewals. They are the twenty twenty-four renewals, but they will be the renewal for twenty twenty-five. Um, this, uh, this batch renewal process was begun in, uh, November of twenty-three. So we will be following suit with that throughout this year. Uh, and we'll see, we, we, we may bring additional, uh, an additional batch to you at the first meeting in November. We may wait till the second meeting in November. We'll just to see how they, how they roll in. But I will say that I'm real pleased with the way renewals are going, uh, right now in terms of people getting things repaired that need to be repaired for, before they call us for their secondary inspection. So, uh, we appreciate, um, the, uh, the businesses working through that before they call us back. Thank you for amending the agenda. Uh, we get one of those, uh, de-cancellations probably about once every two years. I went back and looked and the last one that we had was in twenty twenty-two. But those are always associated with, with when the city of Millisville had the chip program. You can see that the one you're counseling tonight, if you approve it, uh, was actually, um, granted in two thousand nine. So they usually come back up once a piece of property is being sold or being conveyed to somewhere else, someone else. They'll come up in the title search, uh, on that. Now, the only other thing that I didn't include in my bi-weekly report to you all is we will have a pension committee meeting on November eighth at ten o'clock. For those of you that would like to attend, whether you're on the pension committee or not. Um, and I anticipate that we'll come pretty close on that date to nailing down what, uh, we will be changing the retirement system to, uh, beginning January one for, uh, a defined contribution plan.
Are actuaries and things gonna be here too?
We, they will not because we're not gonna change what we're doing with current employees. This will be an initial approval of what will happen with new employees hired after January one. Then we'll come back and spend a little more time with actuaries, look at the possibility of seeing if we want to stay with the, 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 the current process or maybe even look at it moving in over to GMA as well. So, but, uh, we've, we've, we need to take some really good time on doing that, but.
Yes, November the eighth at ten AM.
November eighth at ten AM. That's all I have, Ms. Shinholster. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so we don't have any old business for tonight. So we're now considered the new business, which is part of the agenda. I will ask the clerk to read resolution R dash twenty-four, ten dash forty-five by caption.
This is a resolution to authorize a contract for fence repairs and replacement at City of Millisfield Cemeteries.
Okay, you heard, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Make a motion, we adopt.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Okay. Resolution is adopted. As mentioned by the city manager in this report, we will tonight vote on the first batch of twenty twenty-four alcohol license renewals. Following the voting process put into place in twenty twenty-three. Individual applications are listed in the attachment to the resolution. I will ask the clerk to read resolution R twenty-four, ten dash forty-six by caption.
A resolution to approve the alcohol license renewal applications as set forth on the attached exhibit A for the calendar year two thousand twenty-five.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, silver one discussion, and that is, we talked about how old things become new. This is such a refreshing.
New thing.
Question without having to read each one of these individually. And have them attached and to go on through it. That's all the discussion I have.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Okay. Our last resolution of this meeting is the one that was added when the agenda was amended and has been explained by the city manager in his report. I'll ask the clerk to re- read resolution R dash twenty-four, ten dash forty-seven by caption.
To authorize the cancellation of subordinate deed to secure debt, restrictive covenant, and security agreement for grantor Shirley Young on property located at five twenty South Warren Street, Military, Georgia, three one zero six one.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Okay. We have two alcohol applications that we need to approve this evening and I will ask the clerk to present the first one.
The first application is for Weatherby Columbia LLC, doing business as RK Shortstop, located at sixteen sixty North Columbia Street. And this is for beer and wine retail package to go.
You have heard the application. Is there a motion to approve?
We approve. Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
I'll ask the clerk to present the second alcohol license for approval.
This application is for Nine Star Food Mart Incorporated, located at one ninety-six Robertson Mill Road, Suite A, Military, Georgia. And this is for beer and wine retail package to go.
You have heard this application. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved, we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, um, technically, there, there's no appointments to come before the, um, council this evening, but I do have some questions about the appointments that are listed on your, um.
Our report.
On, on your report. Because, um, have we, has anybody verified with Dr. Nelson, Mr. Pittman, that they want to?
They actually sent a letter. They sent a letter last month. Yes, from the CSH LRA that they wanted to be reappointed.
Okay, so technically, we could have done that.
Well, what I was gonna do was just bring them all to y'all in batch, because everybody other than, other than, um, the, um, chairperson for, uh, P and Z, uh, has, has, will be reappointed at the same time. So all of those.
They've all been verified. Okay. And have we found replacements for the two, for Twin Lakes that are not eligible?
There's some question with Twin Lakes about whether our list is correct. I actually met with Jennifer when we were over for the regional meeting. She had a different list than we had.
Okay.
So I forwarded her list to us and, uh, she's trying to find where, where they voted to approve the list that they had. So, um, that will be the one that's not brought to you in batch unless it's determined at that point in time.
Okay. And so, um, the, the, um, pension committee members.
We have one pension committee member, uh, or a pension committee member that had to be, uh, newly appointed and that would be Pat Pell.
And so that'll come with the batch.
That's correct.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to, um, make sure that we didn't need to do that.
And we'll be, we'll be holding off on direction from y'all on the P and Z chairman and then appointment for, uh, the replacement for Mr. Heels District when, uh, that appointment's made.
Right, my replacement passed the one. That was, that was the one that was Ms.
Yeah.
Wow. And, and that was her. So, yeah, give me a second on that one. Okay, is there a need to go in the closed session?
There is. We have a, a personnel and real estate issue to discuss pretty briefly.
So we do have a need to go in to closed session for the purpose of a personnel issue, real estate issue. Is there a motion to go in the closed session?
Motion to go in closed session.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay. We should be back shortly. Go back in the open session.
So moved.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, this concludes the items on the agenda. Does anyone from council have any comments?
I do. I want to say that I have been to the city park, cause I saw you wanting to go about seven or eight different times. It's really nice. And it is full of kids and they all have a real good time.
Yeah, I haven't been there yet.
My nephew, he didn't want to come home. His, my mama, with my mama, my niece had to spanking and making, come from down there and go home and get in the car.
I've actually asked them to, uh, asked them to send me a quote on new tables and trash cans for outside the area that.
What, what, what age range was that? Cause mine.
Group is from five to twelve. And the other little area is from two.
One to five.
One to five.
Okay.
And then they got swings and things on down from that. But the little burning things with the sun. And the beams for the parents to sit on and old folks.
That's good. Any, any other comments?
Melba and other people in the office took a lot of calls before it got opened. I can promise you that.
So you say you are gonna add a couple more trash cans? Cause when I was down there, we needed a couple more.
Maybe, maybe.
But they only had one.
What we're doing is we're gonna try to get some that if they don't use them, they trip people up.
Okay, so what, what were you saying?
She said they overflow.
There's trash on the ground because there's nowhere to put it.
Okay, yeah, cause that's, that's the problem I ran into on Saturday. I was down there.
But this last time, when I went down there yesterday, um, they had three different Kirby Kirbys down there instead of just the one. So, they were picking up. But the gate, as you go in, the one they're leaving open, it was two little boys and his brother was pulling on the gate. And it did come loose from the bottom and it fell on the child.
Yeah, you had a, you had a call about that and said.
That was a little girl.
So we need to look at that. It just hooks on.
Another instance last week.
And it fell on his.
It's the hinges. Mr. Thomas is supposed to be contacting the contractor to have them come back and change in that type of hinge on it because it's a pin. And that's too easy to pull open, so they need to change it.
You know, I'm gonna tell the truth.
Oh, I do know that. Well, it is a rubberized surface, so if you fail, it didn't hurt.
Okay.
He didn't get hurt. I mean, I lived dating.
We have to figure out that gate.
I just want to say thank you for, um, that we moving forward with the fencing for all the cemeteries.
Well, it, it, obviously, as y'all know, I wanted to do it as quickly as y'all did. We just had to go through the bid process. And interestingly enough, once this company was selected based on the bids, they were within a half a mile of the Biolab plant. And so they couldn't work for ten days to get a contract done to send to us. So, uh, that delayed it even more.
That's something serious.
Really good news and I'm glad everybody in that area was safe.
Yeah, well, not everybody in that area was safe by Biolab, if that's what you're talking about. My brother lived there, no. Yeah, they've got some injuries up in there. That's a different conversation. Well, this concludes the items on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Walden?
I'm here and I'm ready to go.
Ms. Shinholster?
I can't top that, so I.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Uh, you all know, we are really a great bunch. We are.
Sure we are.